So I'm gonna call the regular Temple City City Council meeting to order for August 3rd, 2021. Pursuant to Section 3 of the executive order issued by Governor Newsom, cities allowed to hold city council meetings via teleconferencing, and members of the public can observe and address the meeting telephonically or electronically. To listen to the meeting telephonically, please call 1-669-900-6833, meeting ID 811-1858-2184, passcode 788155, or through the City Life webcast on YouTube. Connect with TC. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez?
Here.
Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Councilmember Viscarra?
Here.
Mayor Protem Sternquist?
Here.
Mayor Yu.
Here.
For those calling in, your audio will be unmuted during public comment and when public comment is open during an agenda item discussion. You can also email your request to speak to cityclerk@templicity.us right now and indicate on the subject line the item you wish to provide comment. Next item is invocation, and thank you very much Pastor County. Pastor County is with Temple City Community of Christ Church, located at 3851 Temple City Boulevard. And Pastor County, please lead us in prayer.
Thank you very much. Oh Divine Creator, we the Temple City Council would seek your guidance this evening through your Holy Spirit. As we conduct the business of this city, we do so in order that this community might become a better community, that it might be able to reach out and bring into this community all that it needs. We know that this will not be an easy task and one considers all of the problems and difficulties that we face. We know there will not be something that we can do on our own, but only through your divine support and guidance. It is for this reason we offer this prayer to you this evening. May we, Lord, see the world around us and this community as your divine creations. As we, as caregivers, we know that this is not something we can do on our own but need your help and guidance. Therefore, let this be our prayer to you this evening. Through what we do here tonight, tomorrow and the following day and the day after that, we may tap into your direction that indeed we might leave this community, even Temple City, a better community than what we found it. Amen.
Amen. Thank you Pastor.
Welcome.
Next item is pledge of allegiance. Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. Please put your right hand in the heart. Ready, begin.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Next item is ceremonial matters. We have two very special presentations tonight. The first one, and I think those of you who can have this access to Zoom can see what's there tonight. And we have two recognitions. One is to one law resident, Mr. Ringo Chu. And the other one is to our basically Temple City Institution, Temple City Modern Day Lighting. So modern lighting. We'll start with the presentation to Mr. Ringo Chu. So on behalf of the City Council in the city of Temple City, I would like to recognize Mr. Ringo Chu for his contribution to the Associated Press team that won the 2021 Pulitzer Prize for the category of breaking news photography. Mr. Chu's photographs were part of a collection of photographs from multiple years cities that cohesively captures, I think they're all part of the AP Associated Press team for capturing the county's, the country's response to the death of George Floyd. The Pulitzer Prize is an award issued by, I think, Columbia University every year for achievements in news, news, journalism, magazine, literature, and music within the United States. Mr. Chu was born in China and raised in Hong Kong. He earned his first degree, first bachelor's degree in journalism and mass communications, and his second bachelor's degree in art, special majoring in photojournalism. And Mr. Chu has been a resident of Temple City for over 10 years. So we really want to, very happy that one of us had actually won this major, got the major recognition, the Pulitzer Prize. I think it's one of the highest prizes you can, one can earn in journalism. And for those of you who actually can see the Zoom meeting, it's one of the pictures that Mr. Chu had taken during the demonstration, I think, in LA. It features a protester raising her fist in the air next to a burning police vehicle. It's, the contrast and juxtaposition is amazing. So Mr. Chu works as a freelance photographer for the LA Times, Associated Press, Reuters, AFP, Getty Images, and Zuma Press. In Hong Kong, he worked for the Express, Xingtao Daily, and Evening Post on various major assignments such as eastern China flooding, kind of British meetings in Beijing, amnesty for Chinese illegal immigrants in Macau, Hong Kong, and over in 1997. So tonight, we want to congratulate Mr. Chu on receiving recognition for his accomplishments and his passion and dedication to photojournalism. Mr. Chu, I hope I didn't catch you by surprise. Do you want to say a few words?
Yeah, I just say, just the way I'm, it is already an honor to be recognized in the city of Temple, I mean, the Temple City Council meeting. Very thank you, Mayor, and all the councilmen. And then I have been living in Temple City more than almost 20 years, so I love the city. So, and yeah, my two kids go up here and then study from Temple, one is graduated from Temple City High, one is still in Temple City High. So, and in the future, hopefully, I can, you know, contribute to the, our communities. So anything, if the city need my help, I definitely will stem up to help, so, thank you.
Yeah. Well, thank you. Actually, before the meeting, I actually went on a Pulitzer Prize website to look into your picture again. And I also actually saw another picture, which wasn't here tonight, which shows you featuring a lady blocking protester attacking a police car. Kind of contrasted two pictures. One is police car burning, one was general public protecting the police car, so.
Oh, yeah.
You know, very, very impressive.
Yeah, that's a little bit more, more positive during, I mean, during the protest. So, and so it's not, not every protest is, you know, against the police. They are trying to protect them too, so.
Alright, well, congratulations again. And any, any comments from council or, or, from council members tonight?
Mayor Yu, if I may just say a few words. I, I want to also congratulate Mr. Ringo Chu for
Thank you.
Because I, yeah, I didn't know you had been a resident for us in Temple City for such a long time. So it goes to show you that even in a small city, small community like ours, there's still, there's still a lot of folks that we don't, we don't know very well. So very glad to have you join us.
Thank you.
Yep. Well, thank you for joining us and, and I really appreciate, you know, you putting Temple City on the map in some sense and that you recognize and keep up the good work. And we look forward to seeing more of your work in the future.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Chu.
Okay, thank you.
Next, we want to recognize Modern Lighting. Tonight, we're very, very happy to have Mr. and Mrs. Kowalski to join us tonight. So on behalf of the City Council and the city of Temple City, we would like to recognize Modern Lighting, located at 9034 East Lasuna Drive for their 75th anniversary and to express our appreciation for their service to the community. The owner, the owners, Mr. and Mrs. Debbie and Mike Kowalski have been in the community since 1987, and they purchased the business from the original owners, the Rose Sacks, who owned the Modern Lighting from 1946 to, to 1987. So for, so for 75 years, Modern Lighting has been a valuable resource to builders, designers, and homeowners. Each of their lighting consultants have minimum 20-year experience in designing and implementing lighting schemes for custom homes of all sizes. Their team has remained on the forefront of lighting industry by regularly training in cutting-edge technology and design. We really want to wish you continued success and prosperity. And, and actually, earlier, I went on your website to check it out, it was extremely impressive. And you can really order all kinds of stuff, not just lighting, any home decoration, mirrors, or furniture, and all kinds of stuff through your website. Very, very impressive.
Thank you.
Yeah. My good Debbie, you want to say a few words to the City Council and to the rest of the city?
Only that it's a pleasure working in Temple City, that helping to serve the community. We work in the whole San Gabriel area and actually all of Southern California. And it's nice to have the community support us any way they can.
Yeah, yeah. Well, congratulations for the continued success. And earlier, I also looked at, when I went on the website, actually saw a lot of good, a lot of good comments about your store. So very, very impressive, so congratulations again.
We like this, we'll put it up in the store. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, congratulations, congratulations. Alright.
Thank you.
Moving on.
Yeah.
Are there any comments? No more comments, right? So congratulations again, Mr. and Mrs. Kowalski. So looking forward to many more years to come.
Thank you.
I guess the next milestone is 100 years, right?
That'd be it.
Yep, alright.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, thank you. So the next item is Temple City Chamber of Commerce Quarterly Reports. I wanted to call on Mr. Peter Choi, President and CEO of Temple City Chamber of Commerce.
Yes, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. Let me say that this is Peter Choi and not Donna Choi. But 10 minutes ago, I was Googling. My cat walked on my keyboard and my audio is now not working. So now I kicked my wife out of her office and I am stealing her space to deliver this report in the modern world we live in. Great to see everyone. I'm Peter Choi, President of the Temple City Chamber of Commerce with our quarterly report. Good evening, Mayor Yu and City Council members and city staff. The word of the day is Delta, as in Delta variant, which is coursing through our communities and disrupting the grand reopening of our business community. The chamber urges everyone to please get vaccinated. Too many stories of sick people dying in hospitals begging for the vaccine only to be told it is too late. Don't be too late. I start with this message because the coronavirus continues to heavily influence everything the chamber does, as it does most of us. Everything we all are doing. We like to talk local, but this global Delta variant is very much impacting every level of our lives here in Temple City and will continue to disrupt our hope for return to normalcy unless those who are still questioning the efficacy of vaccines get their shot. The chamber had hoped to reopen our offices, albeit in a safe, distanced fashion, on August 1st, but we remain closed with staff teleworking from home, meeting at the Kaufman office by appointment. We don't take our cues from our neighbors, but listen to the big guys. Apple recently announced that their workers would not be returning to their offices until at least October 1st due to the COVID surge. Of course, there is a great desire to socialize together, especially for those who have been vaccinated and especially for those who, as the saying goes, network to be paid and are paid to network. As Councilmember Mann knows, however, the board discusses at almost every monthly meeting whether or not the chamber can or should host such events, including our annual gala this fall. We recognize that the chamber has some influence over the behaviors of our members and the business community, and we continue to choose safety and science over denial and misinformation. Indeed, if you go to page 2 of the August issue of Temple City Life, you will see our flyer highlighting the five ways to spot misinformation. Actually, the August issue is a good example of how the chamber continues to engage, support, and promote all levels of the city in our role as a community leader. Our front page features sponsorship opportunities with the upcoming Relay for Life Temple City. We thank Liz Powell of Optum, formerly Healthcare Partners, for attending our recent July Zoom mixer and bringing this information to us. Cancer continues even as we are distracted by the other C-word disease. In memory of our dear late board member Gerard Atienza, we urge all to support Relay for Life on November 6th. Elsewhere on page 1, we congratulate Mia Oberlander for winning the theme contest for next year's hopefully non-virtual Camellia Festival and Parade. Also, during the pandemic, the chamber has made extra effort to support and promote Parks and Recs activities. I personally participated in their fitness challenge, which was extremely helpful to me getting back in shape. I look forward to in-person city council meetings so I can show off my new waist. Meanwhile, we encourage Temple City to have fun, 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 and good vibrations with the Beach Boys, tribute band tomorrow evening, Journey, Beatles, et cetera. We really appreciate Parks and Rec activities zigzagging through the pandemic, encouraging people to go outside and working in tandem with that desire. The chamber continues to publish and transmit our very popular and much-read e-newsletters with the latest state and county regulations and messaging regarding COVID. We thought we were slowing down, and yet now we are still putting out this information that is changing and evolving almost every day. Also, on the August issue, page 9, please check out the full-page advisory from LA County Health on when you need to wear a mask. We appreciate the strong steps taken by our city manager and emergency executive Brian Cook and city staff to prioritize public health and safety for both residents and the business community. Our work is made easier because we are in sync when it comes to battling COVID and misinformation. Let me now shift to another side of our current new normal, the reopening pains of our small business community. In our conversations with our small business owners, especially restaurants, a big concern has been hiring and staffing. This is something many of you may have experienced when you go out to a store or restaurant. So the chamber launched our new MATCH program, M-A-T-C-H, Member Assistance for Temple City Hiring. The information is on page 3 of the August issue of Temple City Life. We invite businesses to submit help-wanted ads, which we will promote in print via the newsletter and across our social media and by word of mouth. The program has been received well. Our first help-wanted ads this month, which are free, by the way, include openings for a server-host bar food runner at our Michelin-starred Bistro Nausez restaurant in Camellia Square and for a part-time teacher at Sunshine House Preschool. If anyone listening in tonight hears of any business suffering from staffing shortages or really any other issues, please urge them to contact the chamber at info@templicitychamber.com. We are also inviting small business owners to take advantage of the chamber's new grand reopening membership special, which offers six extra months free with a standard one-year membership. For the past year and a half, the chamber has offered our services and assistance to all Temple City businesses, members or not. But as the economy reopens, we are inviting local small businesses to now officially join the chamber and discover the many benefits to membership in the city's main business organization. We feel it is important for these businesses to join the chamber so we may both use our resources to assist them while also getting input and feedback from them on what is needed during this precarious time. We feel this membership deal is sensitive to the delicate economic health of our local businesses. As an example of how it is so important to get input directly from our members, I would like to quickly go back to a past initiative the chamber was forging and of which I have spoken here before regarding assistant restaurants with possible action on sidewalk seating and parklets. Earlier this year, the chamber chose to be proactive and anticipating a possible need for local assistance on al fresco dining. We embarked on a plan to engage with the city and review options. Our first step was a call to our city manager, Brian Cook, during which we laid our thinking because we wanted to make sure we were in sync with the city on this and also to learn if there were any similar actions or proposals on the table. Next, we invited city manager Cook and Andrew Coyne, management analyst for the city, to our May 20th board meeting where they presented an overview of the city's current regulations on al fresco dining. Mr. Coyne was great, delivered a very informative update. Next, we went out and talked to our restaurant members. And what we found was that customers preferred to eat indoors rather than outside. And there were varying reasons for this. At Bistro Nausez, the Michelin-starred restaurant in Camellia Square, they had built a large outdoor tent for dining during the pre-vaccine pandemic, but that area is no longer being used as diners wish to eat indoors inside their very beautiful space. Similarly, across the way in Camellia Square, at Bechong, the popular Korean barbecue restaurant, which can often see lines on the weekends, diners also chose to eat indoors rather than outside in the large patio they had built during the pandemic. A main reason for this, by the way, was that if you sit outside, there is no grill at your table. So the food is cooked indoors and brought to you. Also, which is not the full tabletop grilling experience. Also, you miss out on the attendant cheese, corn, and egg cooked in the grill ring. So people like to eat indoors. That's why Bechong is full indoors and the patio is empty. Even in a smaller eatery like El Rey Senor Mexican Restaurant on Temple City Boulevard, which has sidewalk cafe tables, we observed diners choosing to sit indoors. In short, we learned that at the present time there was no need to review or adopt new outdoor dining measures. Of course, any of this could change depending on how the surge of Delta variant cases impact how we must live our lives around each other outside our homes. We will continue to monitor this space and are ready to escalate into action if things change. Finally, while we are talking about restaurants, the chamber hopes the public will understand that as the Los Angeles County economy reopens, a changing job market is throwing curveballs at local restaurants and small business owners with staffing shortages apparent to customers and worrying for employers. Essentially, businesses are experiencing great difficulty attracting workers who want the jobs being offered, while the post-quarantine grand reopening of our business community is well welcomed by both residents and business owners. Due to various factors, this period we are in is perhaps the most difficult part. It's clear from data and conversations with members that small businesses are disproportionately impacted by the struggle to fill jobs. Some factors are pandemic-created challenges like childcare and safety concerns. Others are the simple fact that many restaurant workers laid off during the pandemic found new jobs with better pay and benefits at open businesses like supermarkets. Lot of kitchen staff are now preparing the food you buy packaged at the supermarkets. A lot of the servers were hired as front-office check cashiers, this sort of thing. Again, the Temple City Chamber is taking a proactive approach to helping our mom-and-pop businesses who lack the deep pockets of big corporations, notably our new just-announced MATCH program to assist them with hiring. Meanwhile, we urge patrons and customers to be patient with the staff who are often being rushed out on the floor without the usual training or instructions because the businesses need working staff ASAP right now and not next week, when they normally would have extensive training. The person attending to you may not know the answers to basic questions. The chefs may be hampered by supply shortages, missing critical items for the menu. And everyone is, to put it simply, a little on edge from how the past year and a half and counting has impacted our collective mental health. So please be patient, be kind, and be aware that the service or staff assisting are doing their best with the cards they've been dealt. I say this as someone who has taken a deep breath and reminded myself to be more understanding when confronted with problems when I dine out. In closing, the chamber continues to do what we do with the extra layer of, one, reacting to the latest COVID surges and impacts, and, two, thinking ahead to plan for actions that will help the Temple City business community. For more information on joining the chamber, the MATCH program, or any other questions for the Temple City Chamber of Commerce, please simply contact info@templicitychamber.com. Thank you, Mayor Yu.
I think he's muted.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, sorry. Actually, some of you may know I'm actually not even on the Zoom itself. My internet just stopped and I'm only connecting by the, through the phone. So I'm trying to reconnect as quickly as I can, but in the meantime, help me out because I cannot see you guys. So, thank you, Mr. Choi. Any questions? If not, then we'll move on. Any questions from the council? If not, then we move on to public comments, the item not listed on the agenda. The City Council will now hear public comments regarding item not listed on the agenda. The procedure to address city councils highlighted on the first page of the agenda. For those calling in, your audio will now be unmuted. Please say your name so that you can be added to the speaker's list to avoid callers from speaking over each other. We'll call your name to speak. You can also email your request to speak to cityclerk@templicity.us right now and indicate on the subject line the item you wish to provide comments. As I cannot see the screen, and Madam Clerk, are there any callers?
Mayor Yu, there are callers and we've asked them to unmute and there are no email public comments.
There are callers?
We have a few callers and we've asked them to unmute their audio and there are no email public comments.
So callers, your phones have been unmuted. Would you, if you wanted to address the council tonight, would you please say your name? So I guess there, nobody wants to address the council tonight in public comments. So I will close public comments and move on to the next item, which is consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended unless we move for further discussion. If members of the City Council personally in the audience wish to address any matters listed on the consent calendar, please address them at this time. Madam Clerk, are there any emails, requests to speak?
Mayor Yu, there are no email requests from the members of the public to speak.
Okay. For those calling in, I will not mute your phone. So are there any callers who want to speak on the consent count?
Mayor, we have submitted a request for the public to unmute their microphone if they wish to speak.
Okay. For those who called in, your phone has been unmuted. Please state your name if you want to address the council on consent calendar items.
Mayor, none of the members calling in have unmuted their audio.
Okay. So I will close public comments and I did not hear council removing the items, so I'm ready for a motion.
Mayor Yu, I'll move to approve the consent calendar.
Okay.
Okay, moving forward. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez? Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara? Sir, your audio is muted. Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Sternquist?
Yes.
Yeah, so the consent calendar has passed. And moving on to the next item, which is public hearing, there is none tonight. Unfinished business, there is none. And new business. We have a new business tonight that is public arts donation. The city council has requested to consider a donation of six art sculptures and the cost to remove, transport, store, and reinstall all six art pieces. Mr. City Manager, would you like to start the discussion?
Thank you, Mayor Yu. Yes, I'll start with a brief introduction and then turn it over to Director Matsumoto. Today, before you, the municipal code requires that if, if a member of the public actually makes a public art donation, that it comes before the city council. Ms. Spernek and Mr. Matsumoto will discuss this, has generously offered some art pieces from her father, who is, who's passed. Mr. Mat, as to provide you with information and a comprehensive look at both costs and other factors related to the public art, we've done an analysis looking at what we know of the art pieces, their durability and their cost. Just some context of our public art program in the past. We usually will look at public art in terms of a couple of things. One, the long-term maintenance of, of public art, their construction, and their long-term maintenance costs. So those are some of the factors that we used and Mr. Matsumoto applied to an analysis here as you accept this art donation. Again, a very generous gesture on the Spernek family's part, but in terms of us doing our due diligence, it's important to present to the council what the costs are, what we know and what we don't know as well in terms of the art pieces, which are very beautiful art pieces, in my opinion, but it, we have to provide you with the analysis when we do that. If you look at some of our other public art pieces throughout the city, including the most recent ones on Roseme Boulevard, there are specifications in terms of long-term durability, maintenance, and other factors related to those art pieces that we are trying to keep them for the long haul. We want pieces to last, you know, a lifetime, for lack of a better term. So those are some of the factors that were, and, and why you have kind of the in-depth analysis that Mr. Matsumoto has, has provided. It'd be no different than some of the in-depth analysis we've done with our own murals and other things that we've done in public art with public art pieces in the city. So with that, Mayor, if it's okay, I'll turn it over to Mr. Matsumoto.
Yeah, before then, just well, for the record, I actually joined back in with a different computer. So you guys can probably see me now. So, Mr. Matsumoto, please.
Yes, thank you, City Manager Cook and Mayor Yu and members of the city council. The presentation I have for you before you tonight involves a public art donation. The city was contacted by Ms. Spernek regarding her late father, John Barr's artwork sculptures that are located at their former residence. So in total, there are six, six sculptures created by the late John Barr to be considered for the public art donation. A little bit of background information on Mr. Barr, he was a, he was a licensed architect who created the pieces, art pieces. He was a very avid artist in his spare time outside of his architect profession, and his home is in Temple City located near Live Oak Park. All of the sculptures are currently located at the former residence. And we'll take a look at all six of them tonight and give a little bit of background information on, on each one. So the first one we're going to take a look at, it's a ball and jack. So this item is a concrete rebar wire mesh and stucco sculpture. The jack is approximately five feet high and seven feet wide. The ball is roughly four feet tall, wide, and deep. Both have concrete footings that you can see partially on the base of that. And there, that's how they're installed on the property. Due to their size, it would require the use of a crane and a flatbed to remove and transport. One of the things to take into consideration is just with all of these concrete sculptures, you'll see two more after this. We really aren't quite sure how the art pieces would hold up to removal and transport. You know, typically with stucco, it's not something that, you know, is, you know, as forgiving, especially in transport, it's a little bit more firm and, and, you know, might have some durability issues there. So that's something that we, we took a note of. That's in addition to just, you know, the size of them and, and the weight, potential weight for, for each one of those pieces. The second sculpture is the Madonna sculpture. Again, this is a concrete rebar wire mesh and stucco art piece. It's approximately four and a half feet tall by, you know, four feet wide and deep. Again, we, it does have a large concrete footing that holds it in place in its current location. And again, the same thing with the ball and jack, the materials it's made of, there is some concern about the transport durability for this item. The third sculpture, again, concrete rebar wire mesh and stucco. This one's approximately, approximately a little over seven and a half feet tall. This one, it's a little bit harder to tell, but it has a very, very large concrete footing. You know, very structurally sound, supported from a footing standpoint. It is located in an area where there is concrete and asphalt that's surrounding the footing. And just taking a look at it, we are again concerned about if this would be removed, you know, potentially having to fix and repair some of the concrete and asphalt that's around the piece right now at the property as well as, you know, trying to remove and relocate this one. This particular piece is in the backyard. In order for us to reach it, we would have to most likely pick it from the street using the crane. So just another consideration for the removal and transport of this item.
Hey, Adam?
Yes.
Are the, are these pieces visible from the street?
Some of them are. If the ball and jack is definitely visible from the street, and you know, that's something that you would be able to drive by and see. And the next one we're going to take a look at, which is called Daniel, and it's a steel structure, is definitely visible from the street. Those two would, would most likely be the main ones that you can view publicly from the street. And the other ones are on the property where you would actually need to walk onto the property to view.
What street are they on?
It's located on La Rosa. La Rosa and the cross street is...
Arden.
Arden, yes.
Part of the Arden.
Yes, correct, Mayor Yu. Any other questions at this point from the council? Okay.
I have a question, Adam. Did, did we seek any expert advice on how to move these? On how much it was going to actually cost? I know that there's an estimate of 20,000 to 25,000 in the report, but I'm concerned that it may be more than that, given the fact that it sounds like we have to also pay for any damage that is done to the property in the removal. Is that correct?
Potentially, yes. So we actually...
Anybody about, I'm sure that this is not the first type of art that's been moved by somebody. So are there companies out there that actually do this type of work? And did we get any quotes from them on this?
Not specifically for moving art pieces. We went ahead and did a site visit, both myself and our lead park maintenance worker, to do at least an initial evaluation. We did contact a few different vendors for crane operators as well as a flatbed truck operators, vehicle operators. They didn't specialize specifically in moving art pieces, but just loo, moving, you know, large items, any heavy equipment. So...
I would have to, I would have to guess that moving such objects requires a little bit of expertise rather than just hiring a crane operator who, let's say, moves dirt and stone.
Sure, sure.
And I'd be willing to bet that they are a little more expensive because they, they have, they have that expertise, so...
Potentially, yes. Definitely, it would be a little bit deeper evaluation. We were looking to get a baseline dollar amount and, and go from there. But yes, if, you know, we, we did look at potentially receiving this, these art pieces, that's something we would have to explore a little bit more in depth than. And I think, you know, with most companies, if I can give some perspective is that, you know, a company, even if they are, you know, if they've had experience moving art pieces and artwork, they wouldn't necessarily guarantee that they could do so without damage if, if they don't have, you know, a true sense of how they're built, the weight they're dealing with. You know, just the structural integrity of the art pieces. Unfortunately, Mr. Barr did build them very robustly, but we, we don't have any plans on, on structurally how they were built, you know, beyond what you can see from the outside.
Thank you.
Sure. All right, so this is the fourth piece, and the next three pieces we'll take a look at are steel pieces. This piece is called the Daniel, and this is one that, that you can see from the picture. Pardon me?
Before you go to steel pieces, actually I have an additional question. I mean, to Councilmember Chavez's point, the, are these, I mean, you, you talk about the, these reinforced concrete with the wire mesh, you know, are they hollow? Are you, or are they solid? Do you know?
It's not something we could ascertain from looking at it direct from the outside, but our belief is that it, it is a hollow interior. Now, how much and how far that the depth of the exterior concrete and wire mesh, you know, is concrete versus what's hollow is, is not something that we're able to determine unless we're actually, you know, maybe drilling some pilot or holes or things like that, you know, within the artwork. So unfortunately, we just, we don't have those, you know, there, there weren't any diagrams or, or, you know, structural plans that were made in these creations, correct? Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. So again, this piece of Daniel, it's approximately 12 feet high. It takes on a concrete footing. However, for this piece, it's bolted in place with concrete anchors. So the removal would, would really most likely just be removing the bolts and, and then transporting it off-site. However, again, you know, the question would be just, you know, how durable it would be and, and, you know, if it would remain intact during transportation. Right now, it has, you know, support on the, all four legs. Once you take that out, then, you know, the support is removed, at least on the bottom half of the, the sculpture. Again, due to the size, you know, and, and the nature of the artwork, we would anticipate we would need a crane and, and flatbed for removal and transport of, of this item. This is a slightly smaller piece, roughly five and a half feet tall. It's a paradise. Looks to be welded sheet metal with it being affixed to a concrete base, a concrete slab. This one potentially could be removed by hand. It's something that we potentially could hand excavate. And we would have to investigate again a little bit further how it's affixed to the concrete pad or footing that's underneath it. With the size, with it being a little bit smaller, we anticipated it would most likely handle transportation, you know, definitely better than the concrete or, or the larger Daniel structure. But again, we, you know, it's, it would be a estimation that, that it would be a little bit more durable. We, we just don't have, you know, the, the known structural integrity of it within it just from what we can tell from the outside. And then finally, there's an unnamed piece that's located on the property. Again, it's a smaller steel art piece sculpture with a smaller concrete footing. Again, this could be an item that would be excavated and, and removed by hand and, and utilizing existing city resources to transport and move. So this is for the pieces that you saw today, those are the current conditions of the pieces. This one, unfortunately, over some time, a portion of it is, is missing. There used to be a lion's head that was affixed to the disc portion of the sculpture, but that one is, that piece is no longer part of the sculpture at this point. And those are all six of the sculptures before the council for consideration. As Councilmember Chavez had alluded to, we have a rough estimate for the removal, transport, storage, and then reinstallation of the art pieces at roughly 20,000 to 25,000 dollars. The former property owner did indicate, Ms. Spernek, that she was willing to donate up to $3,000 to assist with offsetting the total costs. If the council decides to accept one or multiple pieces of the artwork, an agreement would need to be secured through the current property owner. Just to note, the Ms. Spernek, who sold the property to the current owner, did have that as part of their sales agreement that the current owner would allow time for Ms. Spernek to potentially try to find new homes for these art pieces. So there's an agreement between Ms. Spernek and the current property owner. However, the city would need to enter into a separate agreement with the property owner if that's something that the council decides to move forward with. And just a reminder for consideration, the larger sculptures, the first four that she saw this evening, would require the use of heavy equipment and removal. We got the rough estimates for the crane and the flatbed trucks, but again, that would just be for general, you know, equipment rental, not something that, at least at this point, is specialized in art piece, transport, and removal. So before the city council this evening, the recommendation is for the council to review and discuss these art pieces and determine if the city would be willing to accept or decline the art donation. If any of the art donations are accepted, then we would need direction on executing an agreement for the donation as well as allocating funds for the removal, transport, and installation of the art pieces. We do have the former property owner, Ms. Spernek, here tonight as well. I'm sure she may want to say a few words. And I'm here as well to answer any questions the council may have regarding this item. And that concludes my report, Mayor Yu.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Matsumoto. And perhaps Ms. Spernek. So before we, we go to Ms. Spernek, I'd like to ask the city council, we have any further questions for Mr. Matsumoto? Maybe we'll go in line. We'll start with Councilmember Viscara. Any questions?
Have we given any thought to where we would put these?
Councilmember Viscara, we have not yet. I didn't want to put the proverbial cart before the horse. We wanted to make sure and see if it was something that was of interest by the council. And if we do accept that, any of those art pieces, we would come back with some identified potential locations for the artwork. We do have multiple city properties and parks where they could be placed, but we would want to dedicate some more thought and discussion regarding the placement if any of the items are desired to be accepted for the donation.
And I'm sure if, if we did that, we'd have to take into consideration safety issues, you know, kids playing on them, getting hurt, all that kind of thing.
Correct, yes. With any type of public art installation, that is definitely a consideration is placement to ensure both the safety of the art piece as well as, you know, the general public and making sure that it's not hazardous. The general public and making sure that it's not hazardous for, for either the art piece or the, or the public.
You know, just a suggestion. Informally, take Robert Hepler down to take a look at him, because he's done quite a bit with. With, with that type of art. And, and works with another man who's done a lot of that kind of. Just a thought. That's all I have.
Alright, thank you. Councilmember Chavez, you have any more questions?
Yeah, I'm not sure I understood you correctly, Adam, but can we pick and choose these items or is it all or nothing?
It can be, the council may pick and choose the items. The. Former property owner, Ms. Farnick, you know, would love for all the items to be donated directly to the city, but. Depending upon, because each one has different considerations, you know, pros and cons from aesthetics to. Transport that the council could determine that maybe certain ones are more feasible and, and that can be chosen and picked out. So yes. It could be. Selected the ones, if, if there is a desire to do that. It doesn't have to be all or nothing.
Well, and, and, and that kind of begs the question and kind of a follow up on, on Councilmember Viscar's question, and that is. My interest is really dependent on where they're going to go. You know, I mean, I hate to see something. I'd hate to see something like this sit beside the, the spaceship in the city yard for months or years, so. You know, that has a lot to do with, I think, my decision anyway. Also, who exactly owns these art pieces? I know that the property has been sold. And you indicated that we would have to enter into a separate agreement with the property owner, so. Is that, is there an issue here? I mean, it sounds to me like. The Sparnix still own the pieces, but they're, for want of a better term, just. Kind of in a holding pattern on a piece of property that's already been sold to a third party. Is that correct?
I would, I would imagine, and maybe Ms. Farnick could fill us in a little bit more on the details regarding their agreement, but I believe there's. They're, they're actually owned by the current property owner. There is that agreement within the sales contract that allows for Ms. Farnick a time period to find a new. Location for these, but I think from a legal standpoint, they're owned by the current property owner, but. Maybe Ms. Farnick might be able to provide some more specific information regarding the, the ownership.
Well, that's interesting.
You are on mute.
Okay, so I, 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 I think we, we were very sad when we moved to leave those pieces behind. And I, I was really thankful that Adam came out and that Cynthia was willing to. Get behind it a little bit too, so I want to just thank both of them right now. And they, there was just like a contingency, I guess you call it, written into the sales contract that we. Like reserve the right to try to remove those items if it was possible for us to do so. The owners kind of want a timeline on it. We have been in communication with them. But I think it's technically correct that they own the pieces. They're just giving us the opportunity to move them. I hope you heard me.
Okay, yeah, I did. Thank you. Well, considering that, then. Have we spoken to the new owners and are they on board with all of this? Are they asking for compensation or? Are we going to have in this agreement that, that we're responsible for any and all damage to the property? Leaves a lot of open questions for me.
We, I did have a conversation with the property owner when we did our site visit. They are aware of what was within the sales contract and agreement of the property. They aren't, at least to my understanding, looking for any type of compensation or, or anything of that nature. However, I think with any type of entering in onto private property and, and I know our city attorney. Mr. Murphy would, would chime in as well that the city would potentially be responsible for any type of damages that might. Occur with the removal of those art pieces. So that would be a consideration to take into account for the council to make.
And we don't know the cost of that at this point, correct?
Obviously.
No, not at this point. You know, most of the work, if, as long as it's able to be removed without any. Unanticipated damage, then a lot of that work could be completed in-house by, by city staff. It's just asphalt and, and concrete work. But in the event that a crane operator or, or someone else might cause additional damage, then. You know, that's something, you know, I think that would be consideration as, you know, collateral damages during the process of removal.
Thank you.
No more questions, uh, customer Travis for now?
No, thank you. Thank you. I'm good.
Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Man, any questions from you?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Yu. I heard in the previous conversation from the Sparnix that. A certain timetable for removal, but I didn't hear an exact date. Is that? Not defined in terms of. How much?
There wasn't an exact date. They just wanted to know if we could find out, if we could give them some information. I think they're. On doing some remodeling. Not right away, but in the future. I don't know what their exact plans are. And so it's un, and it's not defined exactly.
Okay. Thank you. And I guess one other sort of maybe more general question is. Mr. Matsumoto, you mentioned questions of the structure. Some of these pieces, especially the larger pieces. In, in general, how, I mean, let's theoretically assume we somehow decided we were going to consider. Take these pieces. How would we as a city evaluate? The structure of these pieces with respect to public safety, like do we? Engineer, do we hire an architect, like? Does that really entail? Because I, I'd imagine that's not something that's going to be free. So, I guess what I'm trying to get at is there's potentially more cost than if we just. Right, because we want to be looking out for the safety of the public.
Sure, Councilmember Man, I, I think that's an excellent point to bring up, and it is something that doesn't. Fall within the current cost estimates for the receiving of the public art donations. We would most likely, you know, need to contract that out and, and bring in a consultant to take a look at that, someone with an art. Background, but also a, you know, structural or engineering background as well. The big unknown with these items is just, and I think it's typical most art pieces is, is there's, there's no construction drawings. For them, so unless we have physically seen or know the process of how they're built. The materials, the depth of, you know, the thickness of the concrete and things like that. There's just, there's always going to be a, an element of uncertainty unless there's some actual. You know, further evaluation, whether it's, you know, again, potentially, you know, doing a more in-depth evaluation of the. Art pieces themselves, or potentially trying to find locations where they're not necessarily accessible by the general public, but they're just more of a. Viewable type of art piece, so that mitigate, you know, mitigate some of those concerns of their. You know, interaction with the public, if it's just more of a visual art piece as opposed to something that's accessible by. You know, by, I guess, touch and feel, where, where you can get up close, get up close to it.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions I have for now.
Mayor, I had a question.
Yeah.
Is the property currently occupied?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mayor Protem, any questions?
I'm muted. And just one question. I'm not sure, Adam. Why, from the time that, you know, we first had the discussion regarding the artwork. That there wasn't some idea given as to where. Or why didn't we get an, I should ask it as a question. Why didn't we get? Kind of any information regarding as to what would be possible. Areas to place it in, because it's very hard to make a decision. Without knowing, first of all, like what are those areas that you did? Say that, you know, the city has that they could possibly be placed. I, I haven't heard what those, you know, where those are. But that would definitely play a part in, you know, figuring out, first of all, would they work there? And, you know, would that be the first place they would be moved? Because. You know, the original estimate of between twenty-five and thirty thousand dollars to move the art pieces. We would move them possibly to the yard, but then we'd have to move them again. So that would double that cost, and I'm not sure. I heard, I'm sorry, my. I had to go on mute. My dog was going to bark. What is the timeframe for the owners? To want those removed? So I guess three questions.
Sure. So if I break it down, first, that was, in drafting this staff report, that was my decision to. Not identify potential locations due to, you know, again. In my mind, putting the cart before the horse, where we wanted to, I wanted to ensure and make, and verify that one if the. Council so desired to accept these pieces. In terms of the timeline, the timeline is open-ended. The current property owner didn't specify they needed it removed or out within a certain timeframe. But we do know it's just, it's not open-ended. In terms of the transport and needing to store, then identify a little, a location for installation. Most likely, there was, there would always be a need to store before installation because of that timeline. Although not specified, something that we would need to move on more quickly. As opposed to, you know. Extending that out, so we would actually need to remove and accept those art pieces, most likely before any location is prepped and ready to go. For installation, where it would be done on the same day. So. Again, that's part of the reason why it was presented the way it was to the city council was, there was a little bit of a time constraint of just needing to remove them. Once we had them on site, we could give more time for evaluation on location and placement. I think in an ideal world, you know, if there was a, you know, art commission. Then that's where it would have gone first for evaluation and review. But with that, it, it now goes to directly to the council, so it was really a, a time-sensitive item and report, you know, based off of this. You know, need by the current owner, property owner to, to have it resolved within a specified. Timeline, so that's again, part of the reason why it was expedited to the city council for.
Can I just share this? I don't know how the other council members feel, but. I mean, I think this could be an extremely lengthy discussion, but I don't think. Have enough information to actually make a decision, you know, this evening, because. I think you've got two issues going on. You have the very heavy pieces, and then you have the lighter pieces that would be easier to store. Probably would not break, and I think would be much easier to incorporate. I mean, I'm just thinking around our city. Into our city, and, and that would be, you know. Probably easy to do and, and very, you know, not too costly. But to make a decision on the heavier pieces, not knowing where the staff is thinking. I, I just don't know if. Might the questions have been answered, because it kind of feels like we are putting. The cart before the horse by making a decision without having enough information. I mean. I, I just don't think that, that the questions I need answered are being answered, if I may.
Okay, Mayor Protem, do you have any more further questions?
I'm not even further questions. Yeah, I'll come back with, you know, with comments, but I, I'm trying to phrase them as a question.
Yes, yes, I understand, I understand. Well, I, I actually have similar sort of question and appreciate Councilmember Chavez pointing out the liability. You know, questions in, in terms of removal and stuff, but I am, I wanted actually know, even though it was alluded to. The timeframe for the current owner, even though Mr. Matsumoto used to not sort open, but not forever. Do you know if, let's say, like, if we receive not all of them, we. Decide to get, to agree to one of them, for example, or, or what, what, what is the current owner? Disposition of the remaining items? Do you know, or maybe Ms. Sparnik can enlighten us on what the current owner would, would want, would to do the. Is he gonna keep them where they are?
I, I'm, I don't know. They said they're gonna remodel my. I don't know how accurate it was, but I believe they will most likely be destroyed.
Okay. So I, I, so I, and also the other question was the, just to clarify on the night. Because actually I'm familiar with the street. I, I drive by there all the time, so that's why I can tell you exactly precisely where. I think two, four of the, two of the six pieces are in the front, on the, on the west side of your, or front yard, right? The other four in the backyard, I think.
One is, it, one is behind the wall that's in the front of the house. There's a white wall. One is behind that wall, but in the front yard. One, two. Two of them are on the side yard, on, on this, on Arden, but not in the backyard. Only that one is in the backyard.
Okay, so they're relatively accessible.
Yeah, I mean, the, the paradise, my husband and two men moved that. It's not affixed to the. Concrete at all. That I, that steel framed one, I think I could almost lift it up from that frame. I, I really don't see it falling apart. If four people were lifting it, you know, equally. I can say that the jack and ball was offered by an art dealer to buy that. And he said, I can move it, no problem. That was when we first moved in there, and I didn't want to sell it at that point. That was eighteen. Almost twenty years ago now. So those have all been there for forty or forty-five years. Children, I know that it's always a concern about safety. Children have climbed all over those things. And, but that isn't going to reassure you, but I'm just telling you that they, they were child-friendly. Things in our yard.
Uh, maybe Ms. Funny can clarify for me too. I asked a question before. Do you even know if these items are at least like the ball itself? Are they hollow?
I'm quite sure they're hollow, but I don't know. I really wasn't there when he was building them. He has little models of some of them. But not plans we have, but I think they are. There is some hollow core to them, how there's rebar, and I, I really don't know exactly how they are done, but I'm sure the ball is. I mean, you, I think you can knock on it and tell that it's hollow.
Alright, those are all my questions for now. Next, I will do, I would open public comment, but. Before we actually entertain any callers' comments and, and Ms. Sparnik. Perhaps you want to address the council overall on your thoughts and why you come to us. And, but before you start, I must say, your dad and I are fellow. And, but before you start, I must say, your dad and I, our fellow architects, his license number is a couple of thousand before me.
All right, thank you. I, I just want to thank you for taking the time to even consider this. My father was, you know, grew up in the San Gabriel Valley. He was friends with a lot of the Japanese nursery owners. He was really a self-made man. And I just have a fondness, of course, he's my father, for his work, and have tried to, you know, I've approached various cities and have not had any luck. I, I, you know, it's been a little bit hard, maybe because of the COVID thing, to, to approach it really vigorously. And then also, we sold our house, kind of, it sold really rapidly, and there wasn't quite time to do the things that I would have preferred to do had I had more time. I just think there might be a right place for them in the city, but I understand the safety concerns are, are the most, you know, the money and the safety concerns are foremost in your minds. I'd like to think that, I'd like to see Temple City be able to adopt something that's a little more non-traditional. I think it would be good for this, the city. I think Temple City has always been so conservative and so, you know, I just felt that way about Temple City. I always went to El Monte schools because we were on the border, but whenever I drove into Contempl City with my father, I always felt like this place is a little claustrophobic for me. And I just feel like it's, I don't know, I feel like it, I would like to see Temple City be a place that embraced a little bit, maybe, I don't want to say more diversity, because it's a diverse town, but maybe just a little more wider scope. I don't know, for back, for lack of better words. So, and that's all I have. I want to thank you for taking the time even to think about this, and just, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
All right, thank you, thank you. At this time, we want to see if there are any public comments. Madam Clark, are there any email comments?
Mayor Yu, there are no email requests or public comments?
And I look at the screen, I don't see any other callers. Am I right?
You are correct, sir. There is a caller for really for live, Dana, but not for this, no other public, public on the line.
Okay, in that case, I will close public comment and going back to council final questions and, and comments. Starting with Councilmember Viscara. Any questions?
I was thinking about what Ms. Sparnik was saying, and I don't know if we can pick and choose, but if it was up to me, there's probably two, two of those that I would like to see in Temple City. The others, not so much. So, I don't know, are we gonna develop a process to figure out where we want to go next? Like I say, there, there's a couple that I would be interested in, but, you know, would still depend on cost. And, and they're the ones that I think would be less, less, what, dangerous to, to children and the public. But beyond that, I don't know. Anyway, I'm just throwing that out as a starter.
You, you care to tell us which two that, in your opinion, that you might be interested? Or is that something you want to think about?
Well, I'll tell you one, and that's the, the one that looks, that has a look of a, I guess, a Madonna. You know the one I mean?
Yeah, I know exactly which, which one.
So, and, and the other, I'll hold off on.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Moving on to Councilmember Chavez, questions, final questions and comments.
Thank you, Mayor Yu. First of all, I want to thank the Sparniks. I appreciate the gesture and the offer. It's very nice of you to do that. I have also driven by that property many times and, and seen those works of art and how unusual they are, in a good way. Okay, so, no question about that, that, that people certainly remember that. However, I, in saying that, I do have several concerns, many of which have already been stated, so I don't want to spend a whole lot of time. One, of course, is the cost. And, you know, I'm a little concerned that the initial figures are twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars simply to move them. I don't know if that includes relocating them. Eventually, it wasn't that clear on that. And also, we have no idea what, if any, damage is going to be caused to the, to the property itself. Certainly, it would be my position that if there is damage that is caused by the removal through no negligence on the city's behalf, that, that the owner of the property cover that, but that's, of course, by agreement if we get to that point. So I am concerned about spending the tax dollars, especially at this time, with everything else that's going on. I, I'm not sure that would be a prudent thing to do. I, I am concerned also, together with that, that there is no, have been no identified locations or, or, or any, any thought for that mark given to any of that. And, you know, I, I was thinking to myself, you know, before I buy something, I don't know, maybe I'm old school, but I usually consider how and where I will be using that. I don't really buy something and then decide to put it in a, in a storage thing and then later decide what to do with it. I don't know that that is a good way to spend money. I certainly don't think it's a good way to spend tax dollars. I'm concerned that these things will go and sit in our city yard right next to our spaceship, and who knows when they're going to end up in their final resting place and where. And then lastly, of course, as I always do, I guess the attorney in me always comes out, and that is the safety concerns. You know, I'm sure Greg will agree with me that these things would probably categorize as an attractive nuisance, no matter where we put them. And of course, where we put them and how we put them is a big deal from the standpoint of liability. I'm sure, I, I, I don't know that we've spoken to JPIA about this, about what our plans would be, but I'm sure they would have some concerns about that as well. And certainly, if they're gonna be in a public place, not knowing the integrity or any of that stuff at this point, I'm sure we would have to resolve those issues as well. So, I, I, I have some concerns, I really do, and I think it's, you know, like I said, it's a a great gesture, and I would love to see them here. It's just that for me, I think the concerns right now outweigh the value in, in, in taking these items. And, you know, since it's, since they do belong to the new owner, obviously, they can do whatever they want with them. We still haven't, obviously, entered into any agreement with them, and you know, I'm sure if, if the decision is made not to take them off their hands, other arrangements can be made. I, the first thing that came to my mind is, why wouldn't you sell these on eBay? I mean, they sell everything on eBay, and and certainly something like this probably would attract some people who are into these type of things. But at any rate, that's all I have to say for now. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Chavez. Mayor Protemp's strengthless. Any final questions and comments?
No, I just think that if we had the information as far as recommendations for locations, possible locations that that had been looked into, we might get a different, we might be having a different discussion than we're having now. I think right now, there's just too many unknowns, especially with moving the heavier pieces. I think if we had to make a decision tonight, I would say that there are, like Councilmember Viscara stated, you know, the, the pieces that are easier to move, I would feel comfortable in saying that, I mean, I can think of some places myself where those could possibly be put, but the larger pieces, I, I'm not so sure with that attractive nuisance and the liability there, where we could place them. So I would look to the staff to bring back that information, so I could make a better decision on those larger pieces. But that's all I have to say. I mean, thank you to Bob and Trudy. I definitely appreciate that you would like to keep part of history and artwork in our city, and I, I think there's probably a lot of other people that would like to see it. Also, I just don't think that we have enough information about the liability, etc., to make a really good decision this evening.
Thank you, Mayor Protemp, and, okay, thank you. And, and, and it's my turn. So first of all, I want to thank Ms. Sparnik, the offer.
I don't think we heard from William. I don't think we heard from William.
Actually, sorry, sorry. Actually, I skipped over Councilman Min, my apologies.
Sure.
I have a long day today, so I was, I've been a juror in a court, so I've been running around all day, so. Sorry, Councilman Min.
No problem. We, we all have our long days, but I, I do want to, I do want to also extend my appreciation to Ms. Sparnik for, for this generous offer. When I went through the staff report, I, and also based on Director Matsumoto's presentation, my understanding was, staff is asking council whether we are interested in pursuing, exploring more options about doing these pieces. At least, I didn't understand it as make a decision tonight what we are gonna authorize staff to spend twenty-five thousand to take it. So that was my interpretation of that. That, wanna do too much work and spend too much time answering a lot of these questions about location of things, unless there was some interest at the council level to be willing to entertain that. So, having said that, I, I would say, I, I'm definitely intrigued by the, by the possibilities. But I, I share sort of the same questions and concerns some of my fellow council members have already asked. And so if, if there was some type of direction tonight, and I don't know if that fits in with the timetable of everything, because that seems to be a bit vague in terms of how much time we really have to respond and do work, and I don't know how much time, you know, Director Matsumoto and his staff really need to spend to investigate and answer all these questions. I, I would echo the same sentiment that I think location is pretty important. It, it's hard for us to visualize where these are without knowing what the possibilities are. Where the, and, and along the lines of that, same, same thing as Councilmember Chavez mentioned, if the plan was to first move them to the yard and then decide where to put them, I wouldn't quite agree with, with that, that approach. I think we should find those locations first. Secondly, I, at least the last time I checked, we did have a standing committee for public art. I don't know if this falls under the purview of that committee to look at and kind of what Councilmember Viscara would do. That committee also consists of residents who have background in arts and sculptures, and perhaps they can maybe provide, sort of, lack of better word, opinion on, and for me, I'm not an artist, engineer, so I, I lack that design or art. I, I lack any of the artistic context of the sculptures in relation to the public space. And so for me, if we're gonna spend tax dollars, tax, uh, public dollars on, on something like this, I'd like for us to be able to establish that net between and, and, and the public art. And so I know at this point, with the current staff report and the current amount of time spent to investigate this, we don't have the, those questions, but I would want to know more about that, if, if the council was interested in, in exploring it further. And then, third, is, I think, it's been mentioned liability risk in relation to, not, not just legal liability related to, you know, what happens if we damage private property in the process of removing it. Seems like a rabbit hole that I don't know where that goes. So from, I mean, kind of like what Mayor Protemp mentioned, I think it's important to have some legal advice or the legal side of things as to what those potential risks are, not just the process moving those sculptures, also with long-term liability to placing these. And I think that's why the location matters, is I would assume different location carries different risks, depending on where, how you place them. You know, block it off from public access, and that's how you reduce liability. Do you expose it in a steel cage so no one can get in? I, I don't know. I, I don't know what, what that process really, really looks like, but I think for council to make a decision on that, I, I think we, we would need some of that, that question answered. And I guess just kind of throwing that out there, or, I mean, we, has anyone ever considered asking some of local nonprofit groups or like the Historical Society? Would they be interested in something like this? If they really have the space, they might even have to do so.
Or the finances.
There's even further, because I, I know they don't have a lot of money on their physical property. But then again, again, I, I don't, I lack the historical and artistic context to really know, you know, how much value does, does an organization like that really place on this. So there, there is, you know, I agree with my colleagues that answered question. I, I personally would, you know, if, if we had others on council intrigued by the idea, I'm inclined have staff maybe look deeper into that. But if, if that's gonna be this monumental effort, not gonna fit the timeframe of Ms. Sparnik's and, and the current property owners' sort of agreement, then I would say we call it quits, because if we can't do all that work to answer these I don't think council can really make a decision. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Min, and, and then, let, let me restart what I was about to say, and and actually, I am in agreement of everything that's been said by my fellow council members. And, and perhaps let me put in, maybe have the advantage of hearing all that, and maybe I can put that together in a perhaps a slightly different way. But let me start off by saying that I thank Ms. Sparnik for making the offer, not only just offering us these sculptures, but also offering to help us financially due to continue Mr. Barr's work. And, you know, we really don't have too many homegrown artists, like earlier, we celebrated homegrown photographers winning a Pulitzer Prize award. So, for me, even if the art pieces may not be necessarily well-known, but they're still nonetheless artwork done by our local artists and really part of the Temple City historic fabric. And I certainly hate to see them go, and that's why I asked earlier to ask Ms. Sparnik, what happened to them? We don't take them. And I was afraid of the answer, that is, the, they might be destroyed by the new owner. So I certainly would like to see, at least if not all six, at least some of the pieces being removed in, 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 in places where they continue to be enjoyed by other people. I mean, the thing about modern art is, and, and most art, is that not everybody will like them. You know, some like them, some don't like them, and the, I, I might say that the stronger the art pieces, the stronger feeling you're gonna evoke in people. Some hate it, some love it, you know, and that's really the hallmark of great art. In people. Some hate it, some love it, you know, and that's really the hallmark of great art. Um, so um and I agree with my fellow council members. There is perhaps not enough information tonight, but I really don't think that really is uh the fault of of uh Mr. Matsumoto. Now, I actually appreciate what he's bringing to us, because there's no point spending staff time and effort. Uh, and and like some other council member alluded to, it probably would need an architect and engineer. To evaluate the uh portability of you were of the art pieces. And also look at possible locations. And again, I totally agree with my fellow council members. It makes it a little hard to um evaluate the ability of art pieces without actually considering their locations. Um, however, I do see there is a possibility as we are in the process of um. Building uh constructing our first time in the in the city's uh opening sixty some seventy years. A history uh of a brand new park of of the Primrose Park. And there are, as um uh Director Matsumoto pointed out before, they were actually a couple places in in the park plan. That have been at least considered as potential locations for art pieces. So in kind of putting everything together and been discussed, I thought maybe. Um, uh just putting it out there for the my fellow council members to consider is that perhaps. Tonight, if we have the appetite of at least considering retaining some of these art pieces. Would be to um allow Mr. City Manager and Mr. Matsumoto and perhaps. Working with our landscape architect who is designing the current Primrose Park. Yes, it's going to cost a little bit money, but I think that's really what um Mr. Matsumoto is coming to us tonight is to allow. The council to give further authority to Mr. Cook and and him to perhaps. You know, uh hire or at least ask for professional help in in um. At least bring more information back to the council. Now, I totally agree with uh Mayor Protem. Um, there really is not enough information for us to make a decision, and I think that help from a professional. Is needed because it's not hard to actually take a picture of the art pieces and maybe put it in a rendering. Uh, put it in a situational uh photograph and just, you know, create what what the art pieces may look like. But at the same time, I I also think that that's why I kept asking, is the hollow, is the hollow? Because I also agree with uh uh Councilmember Chavez, the the their liability issues not only to. The current house uh at La Rosa. And in the course of moving these art pieces, we actually may damage them. Um, because they perhaps were not designed to be moved. Uh, especially if they're not hollow, if they're substantial concrete in them, they can be extremely heavy and. How are you going to pick them up? You can't just grab them. You have to, you know. Create some kind of attachment and and the attachment itself may actually break the art pieces. So um I think the Daniel sculpture, the 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 uh the lion sculpture, those are. Probably a little easier to be moved because they're steel. But the um like Mr. Matsumoto was saying, the concrete pieces and stucco pieces may be a little bit difficult, you know. Um, so I I suggest the council consider perhaps uh allowing Mr. Cook and Mr. Matsumoto maybe. Uh, working with a a professional if if that if you want the ad hoc. Um, to to art, to community, look at it. I I, you know, I'm certainly. I don't know, don't want to speak for Councilmember Viscara. I think when you start to look at it and come back with another with a report for the full council if you can sit.
Uh, Mayor, you have a quick uh question, comment. Uh, first of all, was the new owner invited to this meeting? Because to me, it seems like, to me, it seems like that's the person we should be talking to, is the new owner who actually owns these things.
Um, I did not specifically reach out and invite the current owners. Um, it was based off the conversation that we had when we did the site visit. That they confirmed the uh sales agreement, the contract um with the property and that they. Reiterated that that was um, you know, something that they would move forward with is is. Allowing for this donation of these art pieces.
Yeah, but the big question that I think I keep hearing over and over is, well, how long do we have? Uh, how long are they going to hold on to them? Uh. You know, uh, uh, Mayor Yu has mentioned, well, we get some further reports, uh. Architects come in and take a look at that's going to take time. I don't know how fast these people work, but I got to believe it's going to take a minimum of thirty days. It sounds to me, based on what I've heard today, the new owner wants to move on and start. Remodeling. I don't know where that stands, and I'm sure the reason for removing these is because. Probably where they're sitting is where they want to remodel. Uh, that would make sense. And so, you know, there are some timelines here. Um, I'm not sure I would agree with uh with uh considering putting these in the new park. Uh. We've already gone back and forth on the design of that new park and now to to change it and add other items. I mean. Obviously, that's a decision for the entire council, but I I I don't know that 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 now is the time to do that. We've we're pretty much. Or along on as far as the design goes, but yeah, I, you know, it's too bad we don't have the the owner here because I think. They would have been helpful in determining how much time we actually do have uh to mull this thing over, I guess. Thank you.
Um, Mayor Yu, may I say something? Um, I I like the idea of per, uh, you know, we have our standing and ad hoc bodies. Kind kind of to, I mean, just like you and I, Mayor Yu, uh, we we serve on. You know, Public Works Facility Standing Committee and and a lot of. Um, decisions could perhaps be be done at at that committee level. So perhaps. In 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 an effort to try to expedite the process, maybe that's. Uh, I think that's a good recommendation from your end. Um, I I'm not, I'm not a hundred percent certain about the. Idea by your professional, just because at least right now, it's hard for me to quite understand what that scope of work would really be. Um, all these different questions that can ask related to structural integrity, legal liability. Trans cost, location, they're all kind of different disciplines, I would imagine. But they all kind of play a different factor in in the overall decision making process. Um, perhaps the standing committee could evaluate all those simultaneously with. Um, and bring that back for council deliberation and. And maybe in that process, we can kind of let the current property owners know what we think our timeline is from the city. For us to make an informed decision. And if they, it doesn't match up their timeline, then it seems like some an an effort that's. Perhaps not meant to be, but if if we can offer, hey, we need, I don't know, I'm just going to say. Thirty months to do this, to to really vet this fully. And that's, that's, that's a question for staff to to really. Help us put together, uh then then that is what it is. I mean, we don't want to be roughing some. For the sake of time, we want to do our due diligence. So a- at least, that's my understanding based on the information tonight. That's maybe one course of action we can is. Is is we we put together, we think would work for us, uh, off that to the property owner and see what they say.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes.
Probably wouldn't be a bad idea to also identify the pieces. That it would be most viable to move and less expensive and less less prone to damage. Uh, right, I I think that needs to be a a consideration. And the time issue, uh, as a few of you have already mentioned, is is very important. I'm sure for the owner as well as for us. I'll just throw that out. And a quick question for for uh. Uh, Miss Sparnik, what was your father's name?
John Barr.
What was the first name?
John, John Barr.
Okay, thank you. I thought it was, he might have been somebody on you in a different life. That's why I was asking. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Now, I believe the council is actually in agreement for the most part in perhaps. I I I mean, I if there are not uh no further comments, then perhaps we can put all that in the motion. Uh, for consideration.
Mayor?
Yeah.
Um, you know, because you mentioned um Primrose Park, I don't think I'd be able to vote. If that was the direction, and that's because I have property adjacent to it within five hundred feet and I haven't been able. Able to, you know, I've had to recuse myself because of that for all discussions. So if. That would be part of a motion to pursue one of the pieces of art for the park, I wouldn't be able to vote on that.
I I want to thank you very much, Mayor Protem, for that, that that's wise and ethical, and I appreciate that. I I was thinking, if the ad hoc, which is the Primrose Park Art Element Ad hoc. Were to look at this, we may want to take the phrase Primrose Park out of it. Um, and make it the public art ad hoc, because they would probably have to look at sites both in Primrose Park and outside. Which would make this a citywide item and and then uh y- you could vote, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if that's your your will, if that goes along with what you're thinking, then we can do that.
Oh, I, yes, if that's the desire of the council to do so, yeah, if there's a motion. As seeing as to as the art hmm at home. Committee to look out, certainly happy to consider that.
Mayor?
Uh, yes, Councilmember Viscara.
You know, if we're going to go down that that road, I think we're looking at adding a few people to that committee. Don't you think, Ben?
Yeah.
Okay.
I I I I think as long as we have council members on it, it's uh the council member, uh, I think can also invite others. To the uh committee, just like uh what we did with the Primrose uh artwork.
Oh, I'm just thinking in in terms of different kinds of expertise.
Yeah.
We'd have to talk to the two people.
Totally different. Yeah, could be totally different. Doesn't have to be um Councilmember Viscara and myself. I mean, could be some, could be. Two other council members if uh if they so desire to help out.
You guys know any crane operators you can get on that that uh group? Might be helpful. Well, maybe we need people that can restore art to prevent damage.
Yeah. Does anyone want to attempt to put this in an emotion, uh, things that we talked about?
So Mayor, Mayor Yu, um, does the motion include? That the ad hoc be renamed? Because I I know that's something you you have the authority to do. So, because I I mean, it'd be weird for us to make a motion to defer to a committee that technically doesn't exist yet.
But I I think we can actually create another subcommittee if we so choose to. Do that could be, could be two, doesn't have to even be a Councilmember Viscara and myself. Could be somebody else. Who was inclined to look at this. Yes, yes, Mayor Protem.
Mayor, I just wanted to share also to for the council to keep in mind that in my recent meetings with Brian Cook. We spoke about the issue that at Live Oak Park, um, they are going to be looking at. Um, new playground equipment. So.
Right.
Just keep that in mind, because there's not a lot of places where, you know, there's available space, so. I I don't know exactly what the timeline is for the equipment at Live Oak Park, but um. If the council wanted to keep the pieces, maybe it should be incorporated. With that new equipment, so something just to keep in the back of your minds.
Uh, yeah, yeah, I I and I actually, if I may say, I agree with a lot of things that have been said, you know. And and and, you know. As my best car pointed out, we may not want to take necessarily take all six pieces. And some depending on how much we like them and how easily. They could be moved without damage and how much would that cost? So I think. A- a- and ob- obviously, and and so so many of us have have had alluded to, how much time we have? If the current owner is ready to demo the building and and move all these pieces away. Uh, it may be a moot point for us to try to come up with a scheme. So I think what the first thing would be to find out how much time and then if there's enough time, perhaps we could have appoint a. Uh, ad hoc committee, uh, and listening to help of o- other other art local artists as well. To come back with a suggestion and for the council to consider. Un- unless the council doesn't want to consider, thank you.
Okay, so before we.
Don't have any appetite.
Before we do all of this. Somebody needs to get on the phone and call the new owner. And find out, okay, how much time do we have? If they say, I want those things removed by Sunday, or they're gone. Then why spend the time and effort going through all this exercise? That's why I'm saying that women, those 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 owners should have been here tonight. It would have certainly helped to. At least where we're going to go with this discussion. So that is, that is the first and only call that I would make. Is to the new owners. They're the ones who are holding the key to all of this. If they say, hey. Take your time, you know, as long as they're out of here by the end of the year, then we know what we're dealing with, but you know, it's. They're the ones that are holding all the cards.
I I agree. Uh, Mr. Murphy, do we even need a motion on that, just to find fact finding like that?
No, that's that's simple direction to staff. But I and I I think staff understands what they're going to need to do to bring any of this back. So I I. I think that's clear. Mr. Matsumoto, do you agree?
I do agree. I have uh several items that we would follow up as direction from the city council. Uh, legal liability issues, a location, uh architectural concerns. Um, potentially forming a subcommittee, but first and foremost is figuring out a timeline. Um, the original owners were non-committal. They were giving vague um timelines and and. You know, that's part of some of that difficulty where we would have to nail that down to. To get a more precise timeline of when there would be a, I guess, a deadline uh for removal. So um, that would be our first step. Um, but per the discussion, I would think maybe as a um. As a first step would be creating that that subcommittee. So if we do have that timeline, we can move forward with these other items. For direction that we received tonight.
Adam, do you know, let me save this, do you know, or Mr. Cook, do you know if. They the new owners are planning to live in the home, or are they going to build a new home on the lot? Or maybe even Trudy might know that.
I don't know exactly. I just know they're going to remodel it and change a lot. That's all that I was um heard. From the realtor exact, uh, but they are living there right now.
And and did they express that they wanted every piece removed? They were not willing to keep any of them?
I just got this, the feeling that they were going to change everything. And um I don't know exactly, um, I'm, that's a good question, if they were going to um. Want to remove everything or not. Um.
So that might be a good question to ask when you speak to them. Um, Adam is. Would they be willing to keep any of the artwork where it currently is? I mean, maybe they would be. We don't know.
How long, how long have they, how long have they lived there? And do we know if there's any any uh. Applications for permits to remodel been filed with the city yet?
I don't, they moved in in March.
In March?
In March.
Oh, my goodness. Well, I would think that if they were going to do any remodeling, there would be some progress by now. Do we know, Mr. Cook, if there have been any applications filed by behalf of that address?
Do not know, Councilmember Chavez.
Okay, well, that might be one thing we could check, too. Uh, see what their plans are, maybe. Um, you know, we can go on and on to this. Mayor, you, I'm, I'm prepared to make a motion if you're willing to accept it, or at least try to do one that I think will
Yeah, please.
consideration all that's been said tonight. Uh, I think it's obvious that the concern is by most of the councils that we are lacking some important information to make this decision and therefore is going to require at least some continuance of this. My suggestion would be that we continue this to our next council meeting with the direction that staff follow up on the items that have been discussed tonight regarding contacting the new owner and, and many of the questions that have been raised. I know that Adam has probably taken good notes and knows what we want to ask. And so that would be my motion. Greg, is that clear enough, do you think?
Goodbye me, sir.
Okay.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, it's moving seconded by Mayor Protem. Madam Clerk, roll call vote, please.
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Chavez?
Yes.
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Viscara?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sternquist?
Yes.
Yes. So the slide will be continued to next meeting on the 17th. And we'll so we'll wait for further report and perhaps at the next meeting, we could invite the current owner to the meeting as well. And thanks so much, Ms. Sparnick, for for coming to, to talk to us tonight.
Okay, thank all of you very much. I just took a long time. It was a lot of your time, but thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Adam, could you shoot me the pictures?
Yes, definitely.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll move on to the next item. Quiz update from Mr. City Manager, Mr. Cook. Give any updates for us?
Yes, very quickly, Mayor Yu, members of the council, as, as, as was noted earlier today, with the Delta variant, the LA County Public Health Department has been issuing its warnings, indoor masking and other measures to ensure the, to to decrease the community spread. Again, Temple City has some of the higher rates of vaccination, not only for 16 and up, but actually 12 through 15 year olds were one of the highest in LA County as well. So when some of the middle school and high schoolers go back to school, there'll be a very, you know, a vaccinated student population as well. So we continue to operate in the manner that we've been operating for the last several months, which is appointments. If anybody does come to City Hall and they knock on the door, it's, we don't, we don't shoot them away, but we try to work with them and help them. But just as the safety measures that we've had as this Delta variant continues moving forward, hopefully the last few days have been a downward trend that we've been seeing worldwide in terms of the spike upward and the downward spike of the community transmission with the Delta variant going forward. We have made one adjustment to the movies in the park, the drive-in movies. Drive-in movie was a great idea and it was a really great idea by staff. I think it was, it carried a lot more when the pandemic, I guess, was a little bit more unknown and vaccines weren't around. So we are adjusting to just a movie in the park for the next couple of movies as well. And then next couple of meetings in late September, early September will be coming to you with a discussion of the ARPA, the federal funds money. The infrastructure bill that included a earmark for road improvements on our, our transit routes, including Lower Susa, Baldwin and Santa Anita is still included. Thank you to Congresswoman Chu for continuing to carry that forward for us. And it looks like, fingers crossed, we may have that funding soon. Staff will start working on some of the engineering of that the moment we hear that that has been funded. And that is it for my report, Mayor Yu.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cook. And next item's update from the city attorney, Mr. Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Cook mentioned the ARPA, American Rescue Plan Act, discussion that you'll be having two meetings from now. The final rule, which is the federal regulations that will govern that is due out in late August or early September. We can always hope that the federal government gives us the rule and time to help us with your meeting. But the, the sort of draft rule makes clear that there are a lot of limitations on those funds. So unless the interpretation of the rule is expansive, I, I don't want to say don't get our hopes up, but just be ready for a conversation that is, is more about how we can work within the federal government's limitations than some of the conversations we thought we might be having when, when ARPA was first announced. Second, as many of you I'm sure saw, New York City is set to require proof of vaccination for people wishing to go into indoor restaurants or indoor gymnasiums, movie theaters, other indoor performance venues. Cities all across the country are going to be monitoring that to see what challenges come up and how New York City is able to deal with them. Because if individual cities have the ability to set that kind of requirement, it may be something that we would be interested in. Finally, we spoke a few months ago about Senate Bill Nine and Senate Bill Ten, which are both put forward by Senator Weiner. Senate Bill Nine was the one that was originally of more interest to Temple City because it deals with single-family residential zones. That one has sort of proceeded in, in a fairly normal course. Senate Bill Ten, interestingly, has now been modified seven times. Seems like almost every time it's in a hearing, it's getting modified. At this point, it would allow, but not require, cities to pass local ordinances that would give the right to have ministerial approval of multifamily residential of 10 units or less, as long as some of the units are affordable units. It seems to be a way to help us all meet Rena numbers, but as we spoke about it at our last meeting, that's not necessarily an issue for Temple City. Still, it's something that we're going to keep an eye on, primarily keep an eye on because it's been amended so many times. The concern is that it might be tweaked to mandate that we do that. And so that's something we're keeping an eye on. In addition, the League of California Cities and several COGS are doing webinars on it. I know the South Bay COG is doing a webinar. And so we'll be again monitoring that to see where it goes. That's my report, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Next item is council reports regarding ad hoc or standing committee meetings. Do we have any reports?
Yes, Mayor Yu. Councilmember Mann and I attended the City Council School District Standing Committee Meeting on July 29th. William, did you want to give the report or do you want me to?
Uh, no, go, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. And please feel free to add anything that I might have missed. It was pretty straightforward committee. We just, we hadn't met for a while and it was basically updates by the school district and of course the city as to what's going on basically in our respective jurisdictions. One of the things that the high school or the school districts informed of is new start times for the school. Well, first of all, I should start by beginning to say that the school district is planning on going back to in-person classes. They pretty much had a summer program that included in-person classes that they felt went fairly well. And so the plan right now is to continue with that with the new fall semester. With that, they have changed the start times. The high school is now going to be starting at 8:30 in the morning. Oak will be starting at 8:45 and Doug Seers Learning Center will start at 9:15. The other schools will not be affected. They will remain with the same times. As many of you know, that's in response to the new legislation that was created by Senator Portentino regarding the, give the kids a little more time to sleep in apparently. So they will be instituting that beginning in the fall. Also, they talked about, again, the plan for attending classes and they are offering what they call a virtual school or academy to their students that will allow students to select one of three options, and that is to attend school full-time, to attend virtual school full-time, or a hybrid of the two, which means that some may attend some classes in person and also attend classes online as well. So they're hopefully, and that'll work out and families are going to have to make some decisions coming up in the next couple of weeks as to which one they're going to be choosing. Thank you to Councilmember Sternquist for arranging the masks from Lifeline Ambulance. They were much appreciated about, I think Brian may have shared with you that we will be offering some of those masks to the school and to you. So they were very much appreciative of that. There's still, our staff is still meeting regarding future joint use agreements. And that will hopefully be brought to the standing committee and then to full council, hopefully within the next 30 to 60 days. Let's see, I think that's about all I can remember. William, anything else that I missed?
Just maybe one thing to, to add to, to your report is this committee asked the school district if they had any plans regarding testing or mandatory nations for staff and students. They currently do not. I think the date that, the date that we met was actually the date that LAUSD released that news saying that they were going to require all, all staff and students, I believe, to be vaccinated. And so they, they haven't real that yet. And I guess, just like anything related to COVID, it's a dynamic and fluid situation. So it's something the school district will reevaluate as more data regarding the Delta variant.
Thank you.
Hey, Tom?
Yes.
Do you know if we've had any kids infected?
Well, I didn't have any numbers for us, but I'm sure there has been. I don't know. Brian, do you have any, any information on that? They, they, I mean, they, they didn't come up with any numbers. I know that they did mention that there is a high, a high rate, and I, I think maybe that we may have even followed up on that. There is a very high rate in Temple City of 12 to 17 year olds that have been vaccinated. Brian, isn't it in the high 80% I think, or something like that? So that, that's a good thing. And a little bit lower for a little older than that. But yeah, I, they don't, they didn't have any numbers for us, unfortunately.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Mayor Yu, that concludes my report. And thank, thank you to William for that as well.
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember Chavez and, and Councilmember Mint. Any other reports? Hearing that, we'll go to the next item. Council items separate from the city manager's regular agenda. Starting with Councilmember Viscara, any additional items?
I really, I really don't have any comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Chavez, any further?
Yeah, just real briefly, thank you, Mayor Yu. Well, first of all, I just want to thank Adam and his staff for a good job in putting the summer concerts on. I think people have enjoyed it. I know we've had a great turnout and a big testament to the work that staff has done. And so I want to thank, give a good shout out for them for, for bringing some, some normalcy back to the city. And along with that, I just want to kind of follow up on what's been said tonight about vaccinations and the virus and everything else. I mean, we all know that this thing has not gone away. It's still there and, and in fact, coming back maybe even more, more of a vengeance. And so I just want people to understand that vaccination is not, is not the end all. I mean, I, I unfortunately, I've had so many friends, not a lot of, well, some friends and people I know who have been vaccinated and now are testing positive for COVID. So that concerns me quite a bit. And that's why I think it's important, I think, as Peter mentioned, that, you know, we need to follow the rules and I, I just hope our politicians who are making these decisions make it, make their decisions based on science rather than politics and and understand that we're still talking about people's lives and, and people are still dying every day from this. And we, we, we seem to have become almost, I don't know, past it. I mean, we were, we were all concerned about it so much before. Now we kind of got over the hump and now we're going back and people are just, I don't know, seem to have lost interest in the severity of, of the situation. So unfortunately. You know, it's one of those things I always remind, you know, you take one step forward and two steps back, and it seems like we've been doing that a lot recently, unfortunately. So I thank Brian for, for taking the lead and of course, making sure that, you know, those people at City Hall are, are safe. And, you know, you walk into City Hall, we have those air purifiers in every room. I mean, people are wearing their masks and, and doing a good job of following the protocols and, and I'm sure staff appreciates that as well. So I thank, thank all of them for, for their efforts. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Chavez. Councilmember Mint, any additional items?
Oh, yes. Thank, thank you, Mayor Yu. Yeah, I, I really feel strongly and agree with what, what Councilmember Chavez is, is saying about COVID now. I, I think, at least from what I've observed with not just friends, families or people that I know, I, I think there's this maybe misunderstanding of how the science really works with vaccines and and COVID, a lot of misinformation. I mean, what's, at, at least from recent articles, like one from NPR and the Washington Post, the Delta variant, at least the data, data right now shows that it's highly transmissible. So even if you're vaccinated and you have mild symptoms or even no symptoms, you can still transmit that virus. And so that's, that's what's really scary is, is previously with the, I guess, so-called original strain. You know, if you, if you were vaccinated and you tested for it, your, your viral load was, was lower. But now with the Delta variant, that kind of upends the original science of what we, what we knew about COVID. And, and that's the thing is the science is, is again, it's fluid and dynamic as we learn more about it. We add more data to, to the collective pool of knowledge. Recognition, each guidance, guidances change. And so I understand people are frustrated, let's see, the so-called, you know, flip-flopping of, of recommendations from whether it's the CDC or the Capitol. But that, I guess, the, the science behind is, is driving a lot of these changes and it's constantly data-driven. So I would encourage everyone to just they stay the course and be careful because no, nobody really knows where this is going to end up, especially get past these summer months and we go into traditional flu season. So, so, yeah, but I, I'm, I'm always a, tend to be an optimist. So I, just like last time, we talked about the high vaccination rates in the city. So I'm optimistic as a community. It seems like the majority of our residents and constituents are doing the right thing. They, they are the necessary encourage, they are getting vaccinated or encouraging their friends and families to get the vaccine. So that's encouraging news in the midst of all this ad news about the variant. Just one, one last thing, you want to report back to the council briefly, as you the council liaison to the, to the Chamber of Commerce. As one, one item that I think is noteworthy for council to be aware of is the, the chamber board is potentially going to consider an agenda item at a future meeting, possibly this month's meeting, maybe next month. It has not been ironed out. And specifically that agenda item is regarding compensation for the president and executive director. He, Mr. Choi has requested the board to consider a form amendment to his compensation agreement that would grant him a certain percentage of a commission A form amendment to his cop agreement that would grant him a certain percentage of a commission. For any grants that he writes and successfully brings into the chamber. Um, there's no specific details, there is no report, there's no actual written agreement. Verbally discussed. Um, it wasn't discussed as a nice item on, on the chamber, so that's something that's going to be brought back for, for the board to. To um, to really look at. Um, and so in, in my responsibility as, as the liaison, um. When and that is discussed, I will certainly bring it back and report what the chamber discussed. That's all I have. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember Men. Uh, Mayor Pretzheim Sternquist, you have any additional items?
Just in line with the um, discussion regarding COVID. I got a phone call shortly before the meeting today from a local business owner who also lives in Temple City. And he called me about asking a question about his trash service and if I could help him with that. And as we just talked a little bit more just about family life and how everybody was doing, he said that his whole family. Tested positive two days ago and they. The two children are under the age of ten, so they were not vaccinated. Both he and his wife. Were vaccinated and they are breakthrough cases, which, you know, really heightens. My anxiety level. Uh, he did say that he was very grateful that. His symptoms have been pretty mild, just basic flu-like symptoms. And he does have un- numerous under- underlying conditions, so. He said if there's anything you can do to encourage people to stay vigilant and be careful. And get vaccinated if you have not, because he feels that he owes his life with this breakthrough case. For um, you know, really not being sick and on a ventilator with his um, health issues, so. Just encourage everyone if, you know. You're thinking about it, to not hesitate and go and get it as soon as you can, and um, that's basically it. Thank you again, Adam. The concerts in the park were great and really great turnout.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. Uh, I actually don't have any additional items. So I'll move on to the next one, which is additional public comment that I have not listed on the agenda. Um, I don't see any calls and Madam Clerk, are there any email comments?
Mayor Yu, there are no email public comment requests.
Okay. I see, um. Diana will relay for, I, I guess, relay for live. Do you want to address the council this time? If not. I will close public comment, so the meeting is adjourned.